Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees, I'd like to warmly welcome you to our regularly scheduled board meeting this Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Whether you're joining us here in person or tuning in online, I want to thank you for being part of this important meeting. As we begin tonight's meeting, I'm reminded of the importance of focusing on what uplifts and inspires. For me, Philimbius 4:8 encourages us to think on whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable. If anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about those things. That spirit of excellence and purpose is what guides our work together as a board. We are grateful for the continued support of our students, families, educators, and community. Your voice matters, and your presence tonight, online and in person, reminds us why this work is so meaningful. We look forward to a thoughtful discussion, shared vision, and continuing the work of ensuring Richland Two remains a district where excellence lives and learning thrives. With that being said, I officially call to order the July 8th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. Okay. We're going to start with 2:1, approval of the agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made public. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the agenda for the July 8th, 2025 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Okay. With that, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. Item 3.1, executive session. We will move to item 3.1, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I move to convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing apparent appeal, employment recommendations and certified releases, a contractual matter regarding the search for proposed attorney for a property matter, personnel matter regarding the evaluation of the executive assistant to the board, and personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation progress report.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? If not, once you see that on the screen, Ms. Porter, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. The board will now enter into executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I move that we adjourn to executive session at 6:27 and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott to end executive session at, I'm sorry, was it 6:27? And resume public session. Is there any discussion? Okay. Is that correct, Ms. Porter? All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now resume public session. All right. Item 4.1 is our inspirational moment and Pledge of Allegiance. We will now move on to that, and Ms. Tamika Washington will introduce this evening's presentation to the board.
Good evening, board members and to our public participants. In our roles, we are connected not only to students, parents, and employees, but the entire Richland Two community spanning from 29045 to Fort Jackson and beyond. So connecting to the community is vital. Today, I want to introduce to some and reintroduce to others someone who fosters community as she champions bringing people together for the sake of getting to know one another, networking, and growing Columbia, South Carolina. Kalid Galman is an entrepreneur, realtor, a mobile app developer, including the Soda City Certified App with over 15,000 users. It's an incentive-based app to encourage residents and visitors of Columbia, South Carolina to patronize local restaurants, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, events, and attractions. She's also one of our 2025 Richland Two Black History Honoraries, and she's a Richland Two Viking. So I want to welcome and thank Ms. Galman for being here tonight to inspire us on connectivity.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I was trying to come up with, I guess, what I could say as far as an inspirational moment, so I'm kind of going off the cuff here. But as a resident, homegrown here in Columbia, I've always tried to have initiatives that foster unity, that bring everyone together, that actually has some kind of economic purpose to boost our economy, but also just to have sustainability, whether it's in relationships, whether it's personal, professional, any kind of way. And so I guess Tamika did a great rundown of some of the things that I do, but one of the things that's coming up is 803 Day. 803 Day is a play on our area code and the date, 803. And it was an initiative that I kind of fostered based on larger cities having it. So Atlanta has been doing 404 Day, April 4th, for like 15 years. Miami does 305 Day. Birmingham has 215 Day. St. Louis has 314 Day. Boston, I mean, it really is a thing, a major city. So now we have 803 Day. And so last year was the first year. 803 actually was on a Saturday, and so we did the most all over town. We had a citywide scavenger hunt utilizing my Soda City Certified App. We had, we went to the State House and spelled out 803. There was a free festival at the Robert Mills House, and participating restaurants and retail did $8.03 specials. And we also had a 5K in Forest Acres. So jam-packed day. This year, 803 falls on a Sunday. So we are still going to keep the festivities rolling. We're just going to do it as a weekend-long thing. So Friday, the first, we're doing a pre-803 Day mixer, which is open to all elected officials and sponsors. So I just sent an invite out to all elected officials in Richland and Lexington Counties. So we'll have anyone there from school board members to mayors everywhere in Lexington and Richland. We'll also have some sponsors there as well, and some local influencers who are really about championing Columbia on a local and regional level. Saturday's going to be the Forest Acres 5K again. And the beneficiary of that is the Cola Rose Shower. It's one of the boards that I'm on. I'm also on Keep the Mintlands Beautiful. I'm also on Richland County Public Education Partners. And I'm also on Carolina Celebration Collective Board as well, too. So Cola Rose Shower is a nonprofit that benefits women. We're going to have that. And then for the festival this year is actually going to be in Blythewood at Doco Meadows Park. Well, we have two beneficiaries there. A back-to-school drive with the Joe O Foundation. The founder of that is T. Owens, who is a Richland, is a Ridgeview graduate. And then we'll have a food drive with the Christian Ministries of Blythewood as well, too. It's going to be a free, fun event. We're going to have a lot of entertainment out there, some local acts. DJ Prince Ice is the DJ. So everyone is welcome to attend. We just got a lot of things going on for Columbia.
Thank you for sharing. Can you lead us in the pledge?
I sure can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We will now move on to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the July 8th, 2025 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, board members, oh, well, Ms. Washington, is that correct? Okay. All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. All right. We're going to take a moment, a point of privilege. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are blessed tonight to have one of our newest members of our Richland Two family here with us today, Dr. Jerome Davis, who is the Executive Director for Secondary Education. Dr. Davis, please stand up. We stole him from Charleston. Yes, he is excited to be here, and we are just excited to have him here. So, Dr. Jerome Davis.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we are also blessed to have with us tonight someone who's very familiar to our Richland family, because he is family. And I'm going to just give a little bit of story here to go with why I'm going to introduce this person and ask them to stand up. You know, we have the privilege of having a wonderful event every year with our retired educators, retired Richland Two family. And at that meeting, I talked to them about coming back into service for the children. And this individual actually came up to me afterward because they had retired, but now was serving as a PE teacher in one of our elementary schools, and said to me, "Dr. Moore, if you need me for something, call me." Well, I used those words against him to get him not just in the PE classroom, which he was doing a phenomenal job, but to step up and once again be the leader of a high school. Mr. Ralph Schmidt, stand up, Ralph. Ralph is our interim principal at Blythewood High School. And I have to tell you, I've already got word. I came back from vacation yesterday. I was told Ralph came into the building. He has hit the ground running. He is getting things. I want it this way, I want that, this, 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 and that. So Ralph, thank you so much for being there for the children. We appreciate you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome, everybody. All right. So we're going to move on to item 6.1, which I don't believe we have any public participation. So we will move on to item 7.0, voting on executive session items. The board will now vote on items discussed in executive session. Item 7.1, may I please, a parent appeal. May I please have a motion regarding the parent appeal?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to grant the parent appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp, seconded by Ms. Porter. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I will be refusing myself from this vote.
Thank you. If not, once it appears on the screen, if, Mr. Trapp, you will just confirm that that is your motion?
That is correct.
All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, one no, one abstain. The motion passes. Okay. Number item 7.2, employment recommendations and certified releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Ms. Porter, can you just make sure that is correct on the screen if there's no discussion?
It's correct.
All right. Board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Motion, or item 7.3, contractual matter regarding search for proposal, proposed attorney for a property matter. May I please have a motion regarding contractual matter regarding the search for proposed attorney for a property matter?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to authorize the superintendent to retain the services of Richardson, Plowden, and Robinson, PA for a matter, for a property matter to include a real estate transaction pursuant to the terms and conditions of the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, Ms. Washington, will you just confirm that that is correct on the screen? All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. All right. Next up is item 8.0, action requested. And we will now move on to that. 8.1, policy revision, policy IKE, promotion and retention of students. May I please, are there any parts of that we, okay? Perfect. Okay. So may I please have a motion regarding a policy revision to policy IKE, promotion and retention of students?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the revision to policy IKE, promotion and retention of students.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, can you just confirm that's correct on the screen? All right. Since there's no discussion, that is correct on the screen. Board members, if you will, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Item 8.2, policy revision, policy GCC, GDC, employee leaves and absences. May I please have a motion regarding a policy revision to policy GCC, GDC, employee leaves and absences?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the revisions to policy GCC, GDC, employee leaves and absences.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct? All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Item 8.3, approval of the 8% bond resolution. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the 8% bond resolution?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move to approve the 8% bond resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing there's no discussion, Ms. Washington, when that goes, oh, Ms. Williams, when that goes on the screen, if you could just confirm if that is correct?
That is correct.
There being no discussion, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving to item 8.0, new business action requested. We will move to 9.1, appointment of the board legislative contact person for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a, please have a motion regarding the appointment of the board legislative contact person for the 2025-2026 school year? Okay. Well.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move that we appoint Gary Dennis as the board legislative contact for the 25-26 school year.
Is there a second? Okay. The motion has been made. Who was that? Who, who, who was, who was that? Okay. Okay. So the motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Okay. Can, Ms. Washington, you confirm that that is correct? All right. Board members, please vote. The motion, or, yeah, sorry. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Dennis. All right. Moving on to item 9.2, the appointment of Safety and Security Committee Chair for the 2025-2026 school year. May I please have a motion regarding the appointment of the Safety and Security Committee Chair for the 2025-2026 school year?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move to appoint Nikki Porter as the board Safety and Security Committee Chair for the 25-26 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington, Ms. Williams, and seconded by Ms. Washington, so many W's. Is there any discussion? Ms. Williams, can you just make sure that's correct? All right. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Porter. All right. Moving on to 10.0, new business, no action requested. We will now go to 10.1, 10.1 Administrative Rule, CCA, CCAR organizational chart. This agenda item is a discussion on the administrative rule, CCAR organization chart. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as required under Administrative Rule, CCAR in parentheses, we display an organizational chart so that the public is aware of how the district operates. Unfortunately, that has been not kept up to date. What's in the system is a little old and outdated. And so as I've shared with the board during several conversations, I have done some restructuring to better align our functions with the work that we need to do to serve our students. And so in your board doc, can we pull it up? You will see the organizational chart. And by the administrative rule, we're only required to show the senior chiefs. But I wanted the board and the public to be aware of the changes that we've made to show down to the executive director level, which is the leadership level of our district, executive directors and above. And so as you look at this, you will notice that there's the Richland School District Board Two, Two Board there. You'll notice a direct line to me, because I am, I work with the board, but also a dotted line to the internal auditor. Because remember, as an internal auditor, the auditor does her reports to the board of her audits. So while she works for me, she also supports the board. You will also see that we have our deputy superintendent, Dr. Franklin, underneath with dotted lines, because while she reports directly to me, she also provides leadership and support to all of the senior chiefs. That's why there's a dotted line. But the senior chiefs are my direct reports, meaning I do their evaluations. Underneath them, you will see the different departments that fall underneath them. And the one department that's had the most change is our academic department. And so under the previous structure, we had, excuse me, we had chiefs. And then some chiefs had EDs or executive directors underneath them. We are moving away from the chief model. So as people that are in those positions leave us, those positions now are being converted to executive directors. So we had recently two of our chiefs retire after 30-plus years of service to our district, and we have hired two new executive directors to fill those positions. And so I wanted the board to be able to see beyond the senior chief for that reason, so that you can see where we are aligned to meet the needs of our students and the focus that we have on supporting our students. And so this is the new organizational chart that will be placed in CCA parentheses R, as well as we will update information on the district website.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? I have one comment. Ms. McFadden, this was her dream. So I know that she's watching somewhere smiling. All right. We will move now on to item 11.0, agenda items for the next meeting. Let's take a look at that draft agenda for July 22nd, 2025 regular board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is July 22nd, 2025. We will have, this will be a virtual meeting. Let me say that again for the public. This will be a virtual meeting, and the link will be available on the district website for the public to join us for that meeting. The call to order will be at 5:30 PM, which will then, we will follow then with approval of the agenda, release to executive session. During executive session, we will talk about employee recommendations and certified releases, return back to public session to move to voting on executive session items, which will include employee recommendations and certified releases, and adjourn.
Okay. And just for the public's information, normally, we don't have this meeting, but we are going to come in and work so we can get the work done. But usually, people take a little vacation. That's why it's virtual. I just wanted y'all to know that we were working hard, but that's why it's virtual, because some people are going to be on vacation taking this meeting. So, but board members, and I'm going to look at you guys with side eyes. Does anybody want to add anything to this? Okay. All right. Okay. We're going to move on then to item 15.0, board and superintendent comments. We will start with Dr. Elkin. We will start with Dr. Elkin Scott first.
Thank you, thank you so much. Great first meeting. And I will say, guys, be on the lookout because I will be having a press conference later this week, and you might want to be interested in that too. So be on the lookout for my press conference. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Porter?
I want to say thank you to my fellow alumni. Inspirational moment by Colleen Galman. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate that. And I downloaded my app, so I'm excited to begin using it as well. And also, thank you for those who made it out to attend this meeting during the summer. I know it's in the midst of lots of different vacations. And congratulations to the new appointments and Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Davis, is that right?
Dr. Davis.
Okay.[1164.33][1164.33](LAUGHING). Thank you so much. We're glad to have you onboard. And I've already heard great things about Mr. Schmidt over there and that, how he recruits as well. So, (LAUGHING) that's a good one to keep on. Thank you.
Mr. Trapp?
I don't have any comments. Lowe's is still open. I'm eager to get there.
Okay, Ms. Washington?[1189.58][1189.58](LAUGHING).
Say congratulations to all of our newly appointed team members. Welcome to Team Richland 2 and welcome back. You are my brother's principal, so I'm going to let him know that you are at Blythewood. Thank you so much for sharing about 803 Day and to everybody who's here and online. Thanks for tuning in. Y'all have a great one, and communications has started the countdown, y'all, to back to school.[1216.23][1216.23](LAUGHING). So, back to school, look at the countdown. Have a great one. See you soon.
Mr. Dennis?
Want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as the Legislative Contact for the Board. Also, wanted to tell the parents and public out there, be on the lookout. Our Communication Department is getting a lot of information out. Your schools are getting a lot of information out about Parents Nights, Meet Teachers, and stuff like that. So keep that in front of you, and that's all I got. Y'all have a good evening.
Ms. Williams?
Feel like pressure's going to be on me, so I just want to tell everyone.[1261.11][1261.11](LAUGHING). I want to say congratulations to everyone who just got appointed. Also, I want to say thank you, Dr. Moore, for the restructuring. Wonderful, great, streamlining and everything. To Colleen, I would like to say thank you for all that you do for our community, for our school district as well, and I look forward to 803 Day. And have a great remaining of the day. Still daylight outside.
All right. I'm going to let Dr. Moore go next.[1291.58][1291.58](LAUGHING). Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Washington, didn't you go? Oh, she did, she did. It's you. It just came really quickly.
Yes, it did come quickly. And yes, we have a countdown clock. It is officially on because there are just 28 days until the school bells start ringing again, and I am super excited about it. Super excited. I know other people may not be, but I am. So while we may still be celebrating our season of summer, around here, we have been moving full stream ahead and getting lots of things done to ensure that we are ready for August the 6th to come. So some of the things that we've been working on, professional development. This week alone, 100 elementary teachers are participating in Orton-Gillingham training at Lake Carolina Lower and Lake Carolina Upper. This specialized training is designed to equip educators with the skills and knowledge to effectively teach reading, especially to students with dyslexia or other reading difficulties. The Orton-Gillingham approach is structured, sequential, multisensory, and phonics-based. During the training, teachers will learn how to break down the components of reading, spelling, and writing, and deliver instruction in ways that are responsive to the unique needs of individual learners. Additionally, elementary and middle school teachers are participating in home, the Homegrown Institute. The Institute is designed to create professional learning communities and shared conversations around, according to each school's unique needs, goals, and assessments. So through intense immersion in state-of-the-art methods and curriculum for teaching writing, educators are exploring topics which may vary depending on the school's prior involvement with reading and writing project and experience with workshop teaching. We've been doing some feeding this summer also. Summer meals have been served. We know that providing a healthy meal to children can be a challenge for some of our families during the summer. So we are very pleased to be able to offer that support again today. Over the course of our summer meal feeding program, we had 13 schools actively participating in the program. Meals were served across 21 days, supporting students enrolled in a variety of summer programs. In total, we served 11,560 breakfasts, averaging approximately 550 meals per day. For lunch, we provided 18,606 meals with a daily average of about 886 lunches served. Now, this is very important because we know that for some of our children, we are their primary source of nutrition. So it's important to note a significant shift in our current participation numbers. As of yesterday, meal counts are down 59% for breakfast and 54% for lunch compared to previous years. But we want those numbers back up. So parents, please, take your children, go have breakfast with them, and have lunch with them. It's free and it's nutritious. We have been also doing a lot of work with our academics department, as you heard from the professional learning. But I know some of the Board members are very much aware of this because you support the arts. The TRIDAC 2025 was a smashing success. Over 450 talented and gifted students from Lexington 1, Lexington, Richland 5, and Richland 2 participated in this year's three-week summer program in band, vocal, strings, creative writing, dance, theater, or visual arts. Out of that 450, 169 of those students were our very own Richland 2 artists and performers. The students were taught daily by master teachers in each area, including some outstanding guest artists like Jonathan Winham, a rock singer-songwriter, and the, and former The Voice contestant from Nashville, Tennessee. Some other extraordinary guest artists included New York Times bestselling author C.L. Herman, internationally acclaimed metal sculptor Bob Doster, master jazz dance instructor Alton Adams, and Robert Gardner and his South Carolina Master Jazz Works Ensemble. This was a great opportunity for our students because our students learned to do creative writing, produced their own literary magazines. Our vocal students took their talents on the road, performing at nursing homes across the area, and the intensive three-week program culminated in three different showcases featuring work and performances created by the students during TRIDAC. Richland 2 was excited to host the Creative Writing, Visual Arts, and Theater Showcase at our wonderful Performing Arts Center on June 27. So as we look ahead to start the brand-new school year, once again, which I am very, very excited, it's the best day of the year, it's the first day of school. I get to ride a bus with the students, and it's just great. There's just really so much to be excited about. So please, get excited, 28 days. But I also want you to understand that the work is not finished. There's still a lot of stuff to do this summer, and we want to ensure that everyone is ready for August 6th. So keep pushing forward, keep supporting one another, and keep our focus on what matters most, our students. I am proud of the work we've done so far, and I'm just even more excited about what's to come. And the last point I have, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is we had a birthday person on this Board who celebrated a birthday this past weekend. It was the honorable Nikki Porter. Happy Birthday![1666.71][1666.71](APPLAUSE).
Very nice. Okay, so I'm going to keep it really short. One, Colleen, I want to thank you for coming. You guys, attend any 803 Day event that you can. Follow her. You know, if you're looking for models for your students and your children to see how you can do things differently, she's a perfect example of that. So follow her, follow her journey. And then also, I don't know if you guys saw the state paper where it said that we have 43% fewer students failing reading tests. I don't know about y'all, but I screamed for joy because that is huge, and all of you are a part of that. There are so many people that work to make that happen in South Carolina, and so thank you for all the work that you did. Thank you for all those people who worked through the summer for you guys, because you had to come here during the summer. And then also, teachers, faculty and staff, I know they put that countdown clock on you, but just take it a day at a time. Take your time, watch your movies, go on long walks. Don't look at the clock. All right. That being said, oh, oh, yes, and thank you for the flowers. And it was Flowers by Angela, not me, but thank you to Flowers by Angela. This is such a great, see, they're trying to give us a message. Smell the flowers. Get in your garden. Touch grass before you have to come back.[1752.11][1752.11](LAUGHING). I'm not listening to her.[1755.48][1755.48](LAUGHING). All right. So now we're going to move on to item 16.0, the part most people are really excited about, and that is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to adjourn the July 8, 2025, regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp. We're going to do a hand vote, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. It looks like there are seven yeses, zero noes. The motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a, oh, have a great night, everyone!